All right, I think we've got a forum already. And this is the second special F C meeting. There will be three sessions lasting from nine A M to twelve twenty P M. So please be seated in accordance with the usual seating arrangements for the Finance Committee. The purpose of the special F C meeting is to study the twenty fifteen twenty sixteen estimates. The purpose is to make sure that the funding requested by the administration will not exceed the amount required for implementing the relevant policies. So depending on the number of members who wish to ask questions, I'll decide how many minutes can be allocated to each member. So please press the request to speak button if you wish to ask questions. And I want to remind members that all questions must be directly related to the estimates. If you wish to follow up on a particular written question or written reply, please quote the reply number on the upper right hand corner of the written reply, for example, F S T B F S zero zero one. And then the reply will be shown on the screen in this conference room. And members can use the online copies of these written questions and replies. If there is insufficient time for members to ask follow up questions, you can follow up in the relevant panel or you can put supplementary questions to the administration in writing. I would like to welcome the F S F F S S T and his colleagues for this session. And in this session, we'll deal with financial services. We'll deal with treasury activities in the next session. So please, um, um, uh, members and officials, please be concise in your remarks, all right? Uh, four minutes for each member. And I'll allow members more time if we don't have too many members who would like to ask questions. I'll read out the names of members, Xin Chong Kai, K K Kwok, and also Fat Trichar, and so on and so forth. This is Xin Chong Kai. Yes, Chairman. In fact, I have already read your written speech, Secretary. I said that we should allow the Secretary to say something first, but I've already read the Secretary's written speech. So do you wish to read out your speech? Or do you wish to highlight a few salient points? I think I'll be very concise. I think I would be talking about the work of the Financial Services Branch for twenty fifteen twenty sixteen and our envelope. There will be nine hundred and eighty million dollars for the Financial Services Branch and the departments under the branch. And this represents a decrease of twenty million when compared with the same amount last year. And then concerning our work, first of all, the development of our offshore renminbi business. And also deepening our cooperation with the mainland in terms of financial services. The Hong Kong Shanghai Stocks Connect was commissioned in November last year. We will be having discussions with relevant authorities on enhancing this arrangement and to launch the Hong Kong Shenzhen Stocks Connect. And we'll continue to enhance cooperation through the super arrangement. And then promoting market development. We've already drafted detailed legislative proposals to attract open ended fund companies to Hong Kong. On the twenty fifth of March, we tabled a bill in Legco with regard to the extension of profits tax exemptions to offshore private equity funds. We hope to attract more private equity funds, offshore private equity funds to operate in Hong Kong. And then concerning corporate treasure centers, we are also proposing some tax concessions. And we are proposing a fifty percent, um, um, reduction in the profits tax for specified corporate treasury activities. And then we're going to, um, um, launch a ten billion dollars worth of I bonds with a three year maturity period. And depending on market response, we'll also consider launching a S U C O again. And there will be a three year pilot scheme and a allocation of one hundred million dollars for manpower training activities for the insurance sector and for the asset and wealth management sector. We are having discussions with relevant stakeholders and the industries concerned. And after we have come up with the details, we will go to the F A panel and then we will apply for funding from Finance Committee. We'll set up the FinTech Steering Committee as soon as possible with a view to promoting Hong Kong as a FinTech center. We'll be having discussions with the relevant stakeholders and the relevant industries. Now coming to the A I I B. This is going to play an important role to promote the concept of one belt, one road. We will make use of Hong Kong's advantages in terms of asset management and financing. And we will also actively consider joining the A I I B so that we can seize the opportunities arising from the establishment of the A I I B. And then concerning insolvency laws, we had a public consultation exercise last year. We're going to table the legislative amendments in Legco within this year. And then, um, the M P F system this year. After the consultation on the core fund proposal, we're going to table an amendment bill in Legco with a view to launching the core funds in twenty sixteen. And then minimum maximum level of relevant income for M P F mandatory contributions and the automatic adjustment mechanism. The public consultation exercise has already been concluded. After we've received the comments from the M P F A, we will decide on the way forward. Then a setting up of the I I A. We hope that the legislation can be passed within this session so that we can start the preparation work for the setting up of the I I A. Now, S V F and the R P S, the relevant bill is now in Legco. We hope that the scrutiny of the bill can be completed as soon as possible so that the H K M A can regulate S V F and R P S systems. This will help to enhance our financial security and integrity. And then Basel III arrangements. We're going to table subsidiary legislation in this council under the Banking Capital Rules. Next, the mechanism, effective resolution mechanism for financial institutions in Hong Kong. In fact, we started the second phase of our public engagement exercise in January. We are now having discussions on a number of issues, including cross boundary resolution arrangements. And we're going to start the third phase of the public engagement exercise later this year. And then we hope that before the end of the year, we'll be able to table legislative amendments in this council. And then for listed entity auditors, the three month public consultation exercise has already come to an end. We will be studying the views received and we hope to, in the middle of the year, publish the outcome of the consultation exercise. Now, over the account derivatives and the regulatory mechanism, we're going to table the first batch of subsidiary legislation in this council so that we can implement the compulsory reporting and record keeping arrangements. Thank you. This is Xin Chong Kai, four minutes. Yes, I wish to ask a question about A I I B. And this is paragraph fifteen of the, of your speech. And it's, in fact, a question raised by Mr. Dary Lee, and that's question zero one seventeen. But then I think you haven't really given a proper reply. Miss Lee asked you about the factors taken into account and considering Hong Kong's joining the A I I B, but you haven't really given a reply. I can remember that for the World Bank, Mr. Chen Kam Lam tried to persuade us to support the Asian Bank injection. And I believe we agreed to the injection of seventy or seventy billion concerning the World Bank. But then what about A I I B? Is it that they will be injecting ten billion dollars? I hope that you can give us more details. You may tell us that, in fact, the A I I B has yet to be set up. But then their constitutions and their regulations are still being developed. And so I would like to know the factors that were taken into account in considering whether Hong Kong should join the A I I B. We don't know whether the F C will approve the funding of ten billion dollars ultimately. But you have to give us convincing reasons for Hong Kong's joining the A I I B. Is it that we merely want to fulfill our international obligations? Or will you want the A I I B to have its headquarters in Hong Kong? But Indonesia has indicated that it wants the A I I B headquarters to be in Indonesia. Now, in fact, maybe Beijing intended that the A I I B headquarters should be in Beijing. But then things are really evolving and developing. And so I really hope to, that you give us more details. First of all, the advantages to Hong Kong. If Hong Kong can join the A I I B, of course, there are advantages, Chairman. The A I B is set up to meet the financing and funding needs for infrastructural development in Asia. We are an asset management and financing center. And so I think we can provide the necessary financial services. And also, we have joined the A D B. Our experience tells us that participation in international organizations like the A D B will help boost the financial influence of Hong Kong. So there are definitely advantages that Hong Kong should join the A I I B. But why is it that we are saying that we are looking into the possibility of joining the A I I B? That's because the A I I B has yet to be set up. Preparation work is still going on. So we've already clearly indicated that we would like to join the A I I B. But then concerning how it's going to be set up and how Hong Kong can take part in its activities, we'll have to wait for further details. So I want to say that we are also doing our own preparation work. And we are closely monitoring the scrutiny of the constitution of the A I I B. And will, as early as possible, make a decision as to whether we should join the A I I B. And then I've already heard, um, um, or read media reports about our injection into the A I I B. But I want to say that the figures in the media reports are not accurate. We'll have to apply to F C for funding when the time is right. And at that time, we will have to provide legal members of more information and more papers to convince members that we should really join the A I I B.
Dr. K K Kwok, very often the administration worries me. You talk about protecting investors. But then there are two things that worry Hong Kong investors at the moment. Number one, A I I B, you don't give us the details. And the public are worried that our capital will flow out of Hong Kong. Secondly, what is more worrying is that the third runway, which will cost one four, one point five billion dollars, will allow the A A to issue bonds. You know very well that the A A is a public asset. In other words, everybody in Hong Kong can be said to own the A A. If you issue bonds and if there will be negative equity and, well, for any reason, the issue is not successful, then does it mean that the public will have to foot the bill for the A A by using public money? How are you going to supervise or regulate the A A in the issue of bonds, including financial feasibility? If you do not have the ability to repay debts, does it mean taxpayers have to repay debts on behalf of the A A? You have taken a leading role to break the rules. When there is no financial assessment, when there is no public information, the Executive Council endorsed the issue. This is outrageous. S F S T, is it that together with the rest of government, you can depart from the rules just to do what you want to do and bypass Legco so that you are not under the monitoring eye of the public and the Legco? Secretary. Chairman, this has nothing to do with the F S T Bureau. I don't know how I can answer the question. I am talking about question serial number two one five seven. Sorry, which question are you talking about? That's a zero two one. Okay, please carry on with your question. Hiring officials are hired by public money. And we are duty bound to see whether money is well spent. If, Secretary, you and yourselves are trying to protect investors, the A A is going to issue bonds, and that is a financial matter. Don't you have the responsibility to do better? Is it that you are refusing to answer the question? Well, I do hope to answer the question, but this may not be within the scope of the F S T Bureau. Sorry. Chairman, this is very disappointing. If you ask a better question, I can answer you. Use other excuses, Mr. Secretary. I have never seen officials like this. You are not showing respect. How can you be also an academic? When there is an issue of bonds, you have to tackle the risk issue. Mr. K K Kwok, why don't you wait till the first of April from ten fifty five onwards? No, they are asking or requesting for controllers or controlling officers funds. And F S T Bureau should protect investors. And the issue of bonds is about a financial product. As you know, Mr. Chairman, the A A is going to issue a financial product. How can you deliberately shock the question? Well, I don't think he is shocking the question. As I said, you can leave your question till later. Mr. Wong Kwok Hing, Chairman. With regard to the introductory remarks of the F S T Bureau, I'd like to talk about the M P F scheme and improvements. I'd like to ask two questions. Number one, the gradual reduction of hedging or offsetting. You have not mentioned this. Please speak more on this. That is reducing the offset effect. What are your considerations? Number two, I'd like to ask about the core fund. You say here that you like to launch it in twenty sixteen. The core fund should preserve capital. That is important. With regard to the three R S, you are trying to raise finances for the third runway. From what you have told us, it is definitely going to make a profit. There will not be any losses. We have all the advantages. So since the core fund is to preserve capital, can you consider doing this? Can you allow a certain part of the A A or three R S fund to be linked to the core fund? Secretary, number one, about the offsetting effect with regard to the M P F. Today, we are talking about the work scope for the coming financial year. We have listed our tasks. As for the gradual reduction of the offset effect, we have not included that in our work plan for the coming year. But as members will understand, the government's position is that we should wait for the market and the public to narrow their differences before we will study it. But this will not be part of our work in the coming year. And even if we are going to do it, it is not just our bureau. We need to have interdepartmental coordination. And also, we need to see whether there is a common basis for employers and employees to do it together. As for investment by the core fund, the core fund should go for long term investment management so as to boost long term return. And the general practice will be for capital to be invested in different assets, including shares and bonds. Stocks represent a high risk, but the return over a long term will be high. Therefore, we'd like to have diversified investment. And talking about bonds, we can allow a capital preservation fund to buy bonds. As to whether we will assign any part of the bonds to be issued by the airport authority to the core fund, I think that will not be appropriate. When investment managers buy bonds, they can choose what bonds to buy, maybe including A A bonds. But if you ask us to particularly assign part of it to the core fund, I don't think it is very good for investment protection. You have to wait till the second round. Mr. Chen Kam Lam, just now the secretary said that within his envelope, he has got less funds. He has only got nine hundred and eighty million dollars. I'd like to know whether you have enough money to carry out all your work areas. You have to study into the feasibility of joining A I I B. We have now got the Shanghai-Hong Kong Connect. In the latter half of the year, we may have Shenzhen-Hong Kong Connect. And also, we are going to explore further into other financial markets. So can you talk about resources and manpower? And whether you have enough for the year? Will it be that you have twenty million less and it may affect the quality of your work? Secretary, thank you for the question. I think members will know that bureaus and departments have all got a big workload. And every year, we have new initiatives. You mentioned the A I I B, Shenzhen-Hong Kong Connect, et cetera. I think we have enough resources because we are used to working on different fronts. And we will work together with the industry and the regulatory bodies. In our funding to this year, we have got more resources for setting up the Provisional Insurance Authority. We have got new resources for doing that. And then we are going to deploy what resources we already have for other areas of our work. Chen Kam Lam, you mentioned the studying the feasibility of A I I B. Can you give us more details? We all know that A I I B will be good for Hong Kong's future economy and our liaison with countries around us. But what are the areas that you will study into? And when will you make a formal announcement that your study is over and that we will certainly join the A I I B? Secretary, Chairman. First, we are having in-depth contact with the central authorities to try to understand the situation about the preparation for A I I B and also the drafting of their constitutional memorandum of cooperation. We are looking into the drafting of the papers for setting up A I I B. So we are seeking a deep understanding with the central authorities about this. And after that, we can ensure or decide whether or not and indeed in what way Hong Kong can be a member of A I I B. So we have to wait for the constitution to be written before we can make a report to Legco. Members, please be reassured that ever since the proposal for setting up the A I I B was announced, we already signified our clear intention to join and that we would like to provide service to the A I B and its members with using our financial advantages. Next, Mr. Kenneth Leng, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to also ask about the A I I B. First, Secretary. I'd like to know whether you can give us a figure of average return with regard to our investment in the A D B in recent years. I'd like to see whether my colleagues can give you the answer. Investment return. That may not be the most important part. No, I'm asking whether you have the figures. Chairman, I don't know whether I can be, I can answer the question. If you talk about the government reserve and for that to be placed with the Hong Kong M A to be invested. No, I'm just asking for an investment return with regard to our investment with the A D B. If you don't have the figure now, you can give us a written reply. Recently, I think we should also actively take part in the setting up of the A I I B. I used to have reservations, but I think this is important now politically and also economically. The thing is, how should we be a member or be a part of A I I B? Hong Kong may be a member of A D B and also a member of A I I B. If we participate in so many international bodies, will you increase manpower at the bureau if we are a founding member of A I I B? Secondly, are we going to talk to the central authorities and other countries so that we can become a regional liaison center? Not to mention the headquarters of A I I B. Would you also like to, for, for study centers to be set up in Hong Kong? Secretary, the first question is, are we going to participate in A I I B? Whether we need more manpower resources? I think that is possible. At present, we don't have the details, but I think it is possible. And we do not rule out needing more resources to help us carry on our work with A I I B. Secondly, you asked whether we can play a certain role in the business of A I I B. We are very interested, of course, to provide services in terms of financing at the A I I B. We are a financial center. We will be very happy to see what we can do.
So we'll be exploring areas in which Hong Kong can play a part. We will be following up on this matter. Mr. Kenneth Leng. Yes, Chairman. I would like to refer to paragraph twenty five of the Secretary's speech. And this is in relation to the reforms for listed entity auditors. We're told that the report of consultation will be available soon. Can you tell us something about your legislative timetable, please, Secretary? Yes, Chairman. We're going to publish the outcome of the consultation exercise soon. And of course, we'll have to discuss certain issues further with the profession. So I don't think we will be able to submit legislative proposals to Legco before the end of the year. I think we'll have to do it next year. So we will work out our timetable in accordance with the Legco's schedule. Thank you. Mr. Jia, I want to follow up on question zero zero nine. In fact, the Shanghai-Hong Kong Stocks Connect has been in operation for some time.
has been in operation for some time and the Shenzhen-Hong Kong Stocks Connect will be launched soon. But then the turnover has not been very satisfactory. And some say that, in fact, mainland investors have little understanding about the Hong Kong stocks market and so there should be more promotion activities in the mainland. So is there a timetable for promoting the Hong Kong securities market to mainland investors? And then concerning such road shows, can we apply for funding support from the SME Export Marketing and Development Funds? In fact, we are now studying the Shenzhen-Hong Kong Stocks Connect. We are also reviewing the implementation of the Shanghai-Hong Kong Stock Connect. So we will try to see what features of our securities market we should promote to mainland investors. We'll work with the industry and the stocks exchange on the timetable for such promotion activities. And I thank the industry for their support of our work. And then concerning funding support by the SME Export Marketing and Development Funds, perhaps the industry can look at the constitution and the regulations to see whether they can apply to the fund for funding support for such promotion activities. I think in terms of promotion, there are things that the industry can do and there are things that the government and the industry should join hands to do. I think the promotion activities will benefit the Hong Kong economy as a whole and I hope that we'll be able to get funding support from the two funds. And then my second question is this. If Hong Kong decides to join the AIIB, then maybe because of filibustering on the part of the pandemocrats, will not be able to get the funding in time to join the AIIB? And as a result, our status as a financial center will be affected? So do you have a fallback position? We are now actively preparing for Hong Kong's joining the AIIB. We're looking at what role we can play and what contributions we can make. And once we've got further details, we will provide the details to members and we'll try to convince members to support the joining of Hong Kong in the AIIB's work. Thank you. Mr. Jeffrey Lam, I want to ask about the AIIB and the One Belt One Road. I want to say that, in fact, this issue was not really announced all of a sudden at Boao. In fact, some months ago, President Xi announced the One Belt One Road concept. In the past few months, I and some eccentric friends and some other friends in the industry had a lot of discussion about One Belt One Road and there was widespread support for the concept. And at the Boao Symposium, it was said that many Asian and European countries had indicated that they would like to join the AIIB, as you're aware. These countries will not want to invest or put money into projects or investments with poor returns. So we can see that, in fact, this is really a very worthy project. And you can see that there is the word infrastructure in the name of the AIIB. So in other words, countries can borrow money from the bank for infrastructural development. There are some who are not really fully aware of the One Belt One Road concept and the development of the AIIB. So I think more promotion and publicity activities are needed. And I hope that the Hong Kong government can also try to propose that the headquarters of the AIIB be set up in Hong Kong. During the MPC and the CPPCC meetings, I also made suggestions as to what Hong Kong could do in these areas. I know that there are discussions between Hong Kong and Beijing on these issues. But then if we cannot keep abreast of what's going on, if we do not know the latest developments, then it's very difficult for us to play a part. So will a dedicated team of officials be deployed to try to bid for the setting up of the AIIB headquarters in Hong Kong? And what can we do in terms of One Belt One Road? Secretary.
Yes, Chairman, thank you. In fact, we have been following up on the latest development very closely and the central authorities adopt an open and positive attitude towards Hong Kong's intention to join the AIIB. And as far as I understand, the AIIB headquarters will be in Beijing. Hong Kong is an international financial center we will look at how we can serve as an effective platform to serve the AIIB and its members.
Mr. Lam. Chairman, I can understand why the headquarters has to be in Beijing. But then we are the country's very important financial center. And so I think we should be able to play a role in terms of financing and other activities. Yes, we are exploring the roles that Hong Kong can play in the AIIB. Thank you.
Mr. Ngung Sing. Thank you, Chairman. Concerning financial services, there are a lot of opportunities that we can make use of and explore. Members have referred to the One Belt One Road concept and the third runway development is also closely related to One Belt One Road. The opposition party seems to be suffering from an opposition disease. And it seems that that disease really can't be cured. They are again opposing the third runway. If we want more business in Hong Kong, then we need the third runway. We need to play a greater role in China's economic development.
I want to ask a question in relation to FSTB FS zero-three-six. And in fact, in the question I referred to the steering committee mentioned in paragraph forty-seven of the budget, it is said that this fintech steering committee will work with the technology sector and the financial services sector to study how Hong Kong can be developed into a financial technology hub.
In fact, we're going to launch more financial products in the future. There is the Financial Development or Financial Services Development Council in operation. And we're setting up another steering committee. And as a result, some technology experts and representatives from regulatory bodies will have to also join this steering committee. But then for the FSDC, is it that it doesn't have enough resources to do its work because of filibustering in this council? And accountants, financial professionals, and also lawyers are providing voluntary service to the FSDC because the FSDC doesn't have enough in-house resources. And these people are asking their own staff to help with the work of the FSDC. So I just want to know whether a formal application for funding will be made to this council so that we can have a consolidated body to promote the financial development of the financial service industry in Hong Kong? Now, because we're talking about another steering committee to be set up and yet the FSDC, which is an existing body in operation, doesn't have enough resources?
Secretary. The Steering Committee on financial technology will be operating for about a year. We need to obtain the views of the banking sector, technology sector, and the financial services sector to see how we can promote and develop Hong Kong into a financial technology hub. It's a good thing to bring together the relevant industries and institutions to promote development in this regard. And then concerning the FSDC, of course, it would be good if it can have more resources to do its work. FSDC is mainly responsible for taking forward the industry's suggestions. And I think the industry needs to come up with some recommendations. The time's up and I hope that members will not spend over three minutes on questions. I have a question concerning question zero-zero-six in relation to corporate treasury activities. It is said that many multinational enterprises establish corporate treasury centers in the same place as their regional headquarters. So in fact, this is tantamount to developing the headquarters' economy. The headquarters' economy or the development of this economy will benefit Hong Kong greatly. I would like to know how many multinational companies have established their corporate treasury centers in Hong Kong? And how many of them have their regional headquarters in Hong Kong at the same time? And how many of them do not have their regional headquarters in Hong Kong? And if you are to launch this project, what publicity will you carry out to attract more companies to set up their treasury activities centers in Hong Kong? And then my second question relates to FS zero-zero-four. And I think you understand that concerning this mechanism, this risk-based capital regime, it is going to be very important for small and medium-sized insurers. The Insurance Authority, I believe, has done some work in this regard. I would like to know the timetable for launching this project.
With regard to the corporate treasury center, we believe there are hundred to hundred multinationals which have set up CTCs in Hong Kong. Certainly, I think that such companies which have CTCs in Hong Kong must have their regional or other large-scale offices in Hong Kong or else they would not have CTCs in Hong Kong. We want to become a CTC so that more regional activities and multinational activities can take place in Hong Kong. This is our objective. With our proposal to set up the CTC and if we make our tax regime more attractive, we believe there will be more companies which will use Hong Kong as a CTC or regional headquarters. As for the risk-based capital regime, we are now doing some consultation work. In 2014, at the end of the year, we conducted consultation for three months and we are now collating the views collected. The RBC framework is very complicated. We think that in phase two, we are going to conduct consultation again so that we can draw up detailed proposals. We have to do some quantitative impact study for the RBC and the impact on different types of insurers. And only after that, we'll consult the industry again. So time-wise, we need to do this step by step. Can I follow up on the CTC? You say there are hundred to two-hundred such companies in Hong Kong. After rolling out the objective, what is your target? In other words, the number of target number of companies? Secretary, well, I can't really give you a target. I say let us increase it by a hundred percent. The more, the better then. Mr. Charles Smock.
Well, I will talk about number twelve. I have done some counting. You have answered seventy questions for this part and I think you have answered six questions on fintech. I asked the question, but you did not answer me. So there are actually more than six on fintech or over ten percent of the questions and also ten percent of the members are asking that question. Every member would like to know what you are doing, what you intend to do, but your answers are very simplistic. You will see that ten out of the seventy questions have given the same answer that you have set up the steering group on financial technologies and then you would map out its detailed work and scope of research. But then the FS has already announced it should be done and we find it strange that you have not thought about it. Is it that you don't want to give us the information for discussion? Well, there is nothing to fear. If we can have the information for early discussion, we can clarify matters. Last Wednesday, you answered Mr. Leng Yuchong's question on Bitcoin. I'd like to tell you that in the industry, many people were not happy with your answer because you seem to be saying it's very dangerous, but very few people use it for payment. However, you did not tell us that actually the case has nothing to do with Bitcoin. It could be with any other scams. In fact, there were not any transactions at all. Well, let us not talk about Bitcoin. In fact, many young people, many companies are working on dot chains and other technological developments. And listening to you last Wednesday, people just get the feeling that the government thinks everything is so risky and people should not develop such things. And in fact, it was very frustrating to them. But of course, in your bureau, you also do risk management, banking, and the stock market, etc. And we also asked you other questions. We see very fierce competition in this area around the world. And I'd like to now give you some time to tell us more, what you have in mind, what your priorities are. And for the developers of such technology, how can you reassure them that government will support them instead of just saying everything is risky? It's very frustrating to them. You don't tell them what you are doing, what you are considering, and you just tell people to be careful. Secretary. Well, Mr. Charles Smock, the Bitcoin issue has been asked many times. Last year, I already said that the technology behind the Bitcoin is maybe good, but then speculation on Bitcoin in the market is of high risk and is very dangerous. And as you said, the recent case is a deception case. I said that many times last time at Legco and it has nothing to do with Bitcoin. As for financial technology, if it is about payment and the payment system and how we can have virtual payment, this is what people are very interested in now. We will not resist technology as a government. Talking about financial technology, we are studying these issues. Number one, how we can make the payment system more convenient so that we can catch up with latest technology and global trends. Local banks are interested in this and some payment system companies are also interested. And secondly, the use of big data. And number three, security issues and security software. We have to work on all these so we can have the electronic platform. We have the interest of supporting technology and we also hope to attract more startups, small
uh, small startup technology companies, uh, so they can be set up in Hong Kong to work on financial technology. We like to uh make policies for both uh demand and supply. Miss Emily Lau.
Chairman, I'd like to ask the secretary this question. In terms of financial services, how can you promote the policy on gender mainstreaming? I don't see any resources earmarked for this. Last Wednesday, I asked an oral question. And Doctor Helena Wong asked a supplementary. It seems the secretary has not heard about this policy. So secretary, can you tell us today how much resources you have and what measures you have to promote the policy of gender mainstreaming in the financial services area? With regard to um board directors of listed companies, you say eleven, ele- eleven percent are women, and you don't want to set a target. But eleven percent is way um away from the global standard. And last year, you mentioned to the U N that you, we have the Women's Commission, that the S A R G is uh working together with it to promote the participation of women in public affairs. But how many times have you cooperated with the Women's Commission to implement gender mainstreaming in terms of financial services? You also talked about manpower training in your speech. Uh, did you also promote gender mainstreaming in that?
Well, yes, at the council last time, Helena Wong talked about the concept of gender mainstreaming. We of course understand this, uh, so there is no question of us not knowing about this. Uh, there are a few things. Number one, when we consider appointing members to advisory committees, we will work according to our own guiding principle uh that we should aim at thirty-five percent participation and for it to increase gradually. We are doing it consciously. Miss Lau, you asked the question at the council. How we can have more women directors at listed companies and also at the exchange? Well, that is a very visible phenomenon. We agree that management boards should consider such participation. But then women participation is of course a policy indicator. And we also agree that if we can have a more diversified board, we can enhance its governance as well. So we subscribe to that idea. Now, whether it be the government, regulatory bodies, or market participants, when we talk about diversified participation, it should not just be limited to gender. Some companies are small, some are very specified. But how can you uh promote it if you agree and support the policy? So I don't think we can have a hard target for the market because not every company can comply with it. The best way to do it is to have companies comply or explain. In other words, either you increase the ratio of women on the board or you should explain why you are not doing it. Have you cooperated with the Women's Commission to promote gender mainstreaming? Of course not. Um, our work should be done according to the guiding principles of the government. We are going to follow that. But will you proactively cooperate with it in the future? Will you work harder on this? We will be very happy to cooperate with the Women's Commission and other industries. Will you also cooperate with the Hong Kong X? We will follow up uh, the enhancement of quality of governance at the Hong Kong X to reflect the views of the industry. This session should end at ten past ten, and we have four more members queuing up to ask questions. I'll have to draw a line. The last one will be Mister Albert Chan, and nobody can have a second round. Mister Leng Kwah Hong, four minutes.
Chairman, we should be honest.
Secretary, Mister uh Lau Shiu Kai said very kind words about you, so you seem to be complacent today. It is said that we should not distrust you. That is what the head of the C P U said. In the entire Hong Kong are asking um meaningless questions. I will now just ask about the three hours. You gave us a background paper on the twenty-third of March. Mister Leng Kwah Hong, uh, some other members asked that question, but I would remind you that you should leave it to the session on T H Bureau on Wednesday. He will not answer you. Don't waste time. Well, that is the style of the C Y Leng government. Did you say Lau Shiu Kai is the head of the C P U? Well, the former, the former head of C P U. Okay, I did not want to waste your time, but uh he was the former head. He cannot give people any position if he is not the head of the C P U now. Now, of course, I understand he is the deputy chairman of the Committee on the Study of Hong Kong and Macau Affairs. His Putonghua just sounds like uh Heckenies. Uh, the son of Li Kuan Yao yesterday said that Li Kuan Yao was learning Mandarin even after the age of ninety. Please come back to the question. I'm, I'm asking you. Is it that the government is telling the A A that they should go for the third runway, or is that initiative from the A A? I could not understand that paper. If the initiative was from the A A, the government should stop it because it is not using or applying the prudent management of finances principle. If the government asked it to do it, you should compensate uh the A A because you are telling them to make a decision that is not akin to the principle of prudent financial management. You are not even clear with the facts. Is it that the government says, uh, I shall underwrite it, uh, please do it? Or is it that the A A wants to do it? And the government plays um ignorance? And you are making it out to sound that Legco does not have to underwrite the expenditure? You have to answer the question, but you are not telling Legco the details. The H S B C has said this is a no-go given the environment of the airport uh or the topography. Uh, two years ago, H S B C said it will not lend any money for the project. The government is passing the buck around. The A A says it has done environment assessment, and it tells the government. And before C Y Leng told the ambulances and police to leave, uh, even if his daughter has called for them, that was the day when the issue was exposed. Is it that you asked Carrie Lam to make the decision because C Y Leng was busy with his family affairs? What is most important is the hundred and fifty billion dollars? So my question for you is simple.
Um, I don't think you can really answer the question because Lau Shiu Kai uh has said that we must all trust you. We can't say that we um, um, do not trust you. It is not appropriate for us to say that we do not trust you. And you can see that for Lau Shiu Kai, the former C P U, he said this. He said, "We must trust you." That was what he said. Mister Chan Chi Chun.
F S T B F S zero five seven. I want to ask a question with regard to census and statistics. In twenty sixteen, there will be a bi-census. And we asked whether there will be um um, a bi-census on sexual minorities and also persons of se- different sexual orientations? And also whether we're going to have a category of um, um, same-sex uh cohabitation? I want to know whether the questionnaire uh is ready, whether it has been printed already? And in fact, um, the commissioner um had a discussion with me on the difficulties um in having um such a survey. He said it would be difficult to um cover that in the bi-census. He said that perhaps there should be uh the subject of a thematic survey. And may I refer to this reply? It says that the theme of T H S conducted uh through contracting out by C N S department were proposed by relevant bureaus and departments. So in other words, the C N S department doesn't really take the initiative to propose um the themes. The themes come from the relevant bureaus and departments. But then I understand that um C M A B and other departments will be looking at whether legislation uh will have to be put in place. And so um it's true that there are difficulties, there may be a lot of variables. But still, I think such a survey is needed. I want to know whether relevant bureaus and departments have um had a discussion with the commissioner on this issue. Mister Tang.
Yes, in fact, after that meeting, I had a detailed discussion with Mister Chan. Now, from our department's perspective, um, what is important in deciding what data together um is whether we are confident that the um data gathered will be accurate. So concerning sexual orientation, um um, such data cannot be obtained accurately through a um census or a survey. And so in a census or a bi-census, we will not be including um this. Then um whether we should give a breakdown um for males, females, others? It is not appropriate for us to um include this question in a questionnaire of a census either. When we do the survey, um, those answering the questions may not think that it's um, that uh, that it's appropriate to have to answer that question. I think you have to uh respect the respondent because um he will think or um that he or she will think that he or she is not fully respected. And then I asked whether um there should be a box um for people to take um same-sex cohabitation. Is it that you will not be doing this? Correct, Chairman? Because um most respondents will find such a question embarrassing to answer. F S zero four six, um, Chairman, concerning the Resolution Center. F D R C. Uh, we are told that um we've only got mediation for um eighty-two applications. In other words, the center has handled five thousand two hundred and fifty inquiries and has received fifty, eighty-two applications for mediation services. And so we would like to know more details concerning the eighty-two applications. For example, the amounts involved. And what about the compensation paid by organizations being complained against? And I would like to know whether meetings and hearings have been held, and if so, how many?
Chairman, as far as I can remember, uh, we mediated or provided mediation services in about seventy cases. And the mediation was done through um the studying of papers, and no hearings were needed. I, I do um have the figures, but I don't have them here with me. I'll give members the figures after the meeting. Mister Ho.
I um really doubt the effectiveness of the F D R, F D R C. We proposed that there should be a, an ombudsman for financial um affairs. But then um there uh was strong objection from the industry. And as a result, the F D R C was set up. I understand that um there is a cap concerning the amount involved, five hundred um thousand. And then uh zero five five. Money laundering cases. Uh, there were nine hundred and eighty-four cases in twenty fourteen, as stated in the reply. And in those cases, as I, as I understand, there is this um uh joint financial intelligence unit. I want to know whether in all the cases, the accounts of those concerned were frozen? And how many complaints um have been received? I understand that some have complained that their accounts have been frozen for a number of years, but then pro- no prosecution action has been taken so far. Chairman.
Of course, we do regulate the uh anti-money laundering regime of the banks. Um, the um, most of the cases are handled by the J F I U, um, by the police, and they keep their own figures, and so we do not have such figures. That, that, but then this will affect the operation of Hong Kong as an international financial center because clients may all of a sudden um receive notice that their accounts have been frozen. The banks will not tell them why their accounts have been frozen. So they are kept in the dark. And the government um doesn't take any action to say obtain orders of any sort. And as a result, I know that there are court cases um involving banks and their clients. So I think um there's a problem uh concerning the procedures adopted by the J F I U. I think I'll um ask um the bureau and the police whether they've got figures for members' reference. All right? Um, last member in this session, Mister Albert Chan. I want to ask a question about three A of um the priorities of the bureau in the coming year in the speech. Um, he said that um, 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 he would continue to abide by uh prudent fiscal management principles uh in managing um public resources and that he would consider, continue to consider um loan um uh, uh, um, arrangements of loans and borrowings. No, um, um, this is for the next session, Mister Albert Chan. So can you ask your question in the next session so that we can end this session punctually?
Uh, can I ask a question in relation to I can fish this session or the next one, please? I can fish, um, the, not, not the next one. Um, a, a, a later one. Oh, sorry, Chairman. Um, you can ask that question at eleven o'clock. All right, so I, I'll leave um these two questions to um the next session and to the session after next. And some members have mentioned Hong Kong's future economic development. And Chairman, I understand that you want us to ask um about the third runway in another session. But can you allow me to um, um, break the rule a bit and ask this question? But he will not give a reply. In fact, some members have tried to um, um, bend the rules, so to speak, but to no avail. Um, if that's the case, then I, I may go a bit further then. With regard to the financing of the third runway now, Secretary, you um are responsible for managing um the government's finances. Some have said that the A A's assessment of the future return rates are inaccurate and are overly optimistic. And so I think you have um the duty to monitor such assessments because I understand that you and some other officials are members of the A A. So um, you know, uh, many um establishment members have um loudly um said to the public that they support the project. Uh, Mister Michael Tian has um indicated some reservations, but then there are some like Mister Leng Sing who will say yes, 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 when um the uh central government asks them to say yes. Um, so um, please, uh, provide um all members with accurate for information. Do you know that uh in fact, the Communist Party speaks nonsense? You know, in the nineteen forties, they said that there should, in, the Communist Party said that there should be democratic elections because Mister Ip Kau Heem has um really uh made me angry. And these are the bangers of the Communist Party.
And these are the bangers of the Communist Party in Hong Kong. But we, time's up. So I just hope that the secretary will make sure that the A A will provide accurate information for legal members and for the public. We don't want inaccurate data to mislead the public and some legal members, Secretary. But then this is not related to the work of the bureau, Chairman, I'm afraid. But then is it that you need to rectify mistakes in the A A's assessments? Is it not your duty? We are in this session talking about financial services. But what if the A A misleads the public? Because our image as an international financial center will be tarnished. So we'll start the next session at ten past ten punctually.